Mr. John Welch.
Present.
Ms. Diane Nguyen.
Here.
Can you have a forum, Mayor?
Thank you. This evening, we have Dr. Rob Lindstedt from the principal at Sunrise Christian Cowie to lead us in prayer. Mr. Lindstedt.
I'm looking to ask if he's taken a look in her master. Let me commend the city first of all for a good taste in their Christmas decorations. I've had two or three people that have said, wow, have you seen the city's decor? I said, no, I haven't. So I saw them tonight. Very well done, and I think people in the community are impressed with that. So good job. Let's pray. Father, we do come to you, and we thank you most of all that we have a God who hears our prayers, answers our prayers, cares for us. Father, we're so glad that even though we live in a time of uncertainty, that our God is not uncertain. You're stable, you're loving, and you're good to us in so many ways. Father, we pray for our community, for our health, our safety, for our jobs. Father, we pray for our families, pray for our leaders, pray for our firemen and our policemen. Father, we do pray that even here in the council, that you would give special wisdom and good judgment to our leaders as we move forward in this unusual time. Father, we pray for our country, for it to be stable and to be healthy. And Father, we commit our country, you may return back to you because we need your blessing. Father, we thank you for this very special time of the year when we can remember the great gift that you gave to us in the Son, Jesus Christ. Even though he was born as a baby, what a sacrifice he made, that we might have salvation through Christ. So we give you thanks for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every virtue and justice for all.
This evening, we determine the agenda additions. Manager would like to add item K, an ordinance authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property under a lease between the City of Bel Air and the City of Bel Air Public Building Commission. Is there a motion to add this agenda item? Well, maybe I should ask before that, are there any other agenda items we need to consider? If not, I'm entertaining a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Elsop.
I motion to add agenda item K for consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property under a lease between the City of Bel Air and the PBC.
Second. First and second. Any discussion? Right now, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Move on to consent agenda. Conards only the minutes from the December 1st City Council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
First and second. Is that Mr. Schroeder? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Welch.
Do we need to point out that one of these items changed from when it was originally published last week?
There was a couple edits done to it, yes. I asked for one to correct a motion that wasn't stated correctly, and they had Mr. Elsop voting against Mr. Smith being... I'm sorry?
He was abstaining.
Yeah, Mr. Elsop abstained, yes. Did that not get into the minutes correctly?
It's been corrected, but I just wanted to make sure that we did what we needed to do since we published something else earlier.
Yeah, and then if you... Was it today or yesterday? I'm confused on the days, and a revision was published, so, okay.
Yeah, we have the revision, and I noticed it was there this morning, but it was different last week, so we need to state that we arrived at the point when we published it last week and today, or yesterday.
So long as it's in the latest agenda packet that was published, then you're fine. You don't have to state the revision.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no further objection.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Just to be clear, the copy that's in front of us is the latest copy, correct?
That is correct, City Clerk? Yes.
This is right, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Right now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. On item four, approval of appropriations ordinance, this period is a bit high due to property tax and special assessment payments to the Sevick County Treasurer. Also includes an Eagle Lake street repairs, cost of issuance fees, and council chamber COVID modifications, and a $75,000 payment to rural water district. Are there any questions for the city manager?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroeder.
All motion to approve the appropriation ordinance 20-23? Second.
First and second. Any other discussion? Right now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. City requested appearances. We have none for this meeting. So we'll move on to citizen concerns. City Clerk, do you have any emails to read?
No, Mayor, we did not receive any.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens present that would like to address council? Right now, we'll move on to city council member reports. Ms. Nguyen, would you like to start?
Sure. Well, it is good to be back. It's a little longer drive for me. I've been spending most of my time at my son's home, and he lives at 52nd Street South, so about as far away from me as he could get. But his health is beginning to improve, and that's a good thing. But that has taken up most of my time for the last several weeks, months, in fact. And I have not had it too. Needed some time, so it felt good to jump in the car tonight, drive over here. Actually, I was over here last night because I thought it was too steep, but hey. You get a little confused when they're all running together. So anyway, hopefully, this will continue, and, you know, I'll be able to attend the meetings again on a regular basis.
Well, we're glad to hear. Thank you. Mr. Schroeder.
I have no report.
Mr. Elsop.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
The only thing I have to report is that I did get to attend the holiday celebration, and it was quite well attended from what I saw. Lots of cars driving by and waving at Santa, and the fireworks were excellent. So I'd like to thank the staff for all the work that they've put into that.
Yes, it's great. Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I just think it was...
It's your job, Travis.
We brought our grandson, we all enjoyed the fireworks. We got to wave at Santa. He was a little farther than we had hoped to wave at, but all in all, it was pretty good under the circumstances. I think it was a great event.
Well, I too attended the fireworks and celebration, and it was very good. I really appreciate it. I did get some citizens' response that said it was nice, very nice comments from citizens as well. So a big thank you to Ashley Sherwood and city staff for putting it together, as well as the sponsors. Bel Air Lions Club, Bel Air Chamber of Commerce, Chisholm Trail State Bank, Security First Title, Waste Connections, MKEC, Carver, and Heartland Animal Hospital. Just a reminder, the city paid no money towards this celebration. This was all funded, done by donations from these organizations, so it's very generous of them to help us out that way. On December 9th, I attended the utility advisory committee. Been looking into possibilities of recycling grass clippings. So far, the options don't look too positive, but more research is being done, so they're still working on that issue. December 10th, I attended the first part of the planning commission meeting. They are considering a zoning change along 53rd Street. Some residents in the area were not happy about the drainage in the area. Developer agreed to table the item until he can meet with those interested parties to see if a workable solution can be made. It was a great example of citizens and developer working together to solve a problem, hopefully to benefit everyone. So rather than some of these loggerheads we've seen in the past, this one looks like they're going to work out something. That's good. Looks like Sevick County COVID infection rate is coming down from a high of 23.3% on November 17th to 15.5% today. So that's very good news. Of course, with one vaccine being approved and distribution started, we may see the beginning of the end of this crisis, which is great. May take another six months before we get back to some level of normality, but we are seeing light at the end of the tunnel. And I heard today that there looks like they're going to probably approve the Moderna vaccine in the next couple of days, so that would even be better, having two vaccines out there. Please continue to wear your mask in public places, wash hands frequently, and maintain a six-foot social distancing. And I do hope everyone has a blessed Christmas celebrating the birth of Jesus. And at that, I will move on to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. January brings on our business license renewal due date, so all brick and mortar businesses in Bel Air and certain categories of home-based businesses are required to register with the city. The city clerk has asked me to let you know that she sent out letters reminding everyone of that, and anyone with questions may contact the city, but the deadline for those is January 31st. Also wanted to advise the public of a couple of questions that I received about open records requests. The state requires cities and other agencies to keep records and make them available for the public to inspect, and we do that. In some cases, we do charge a fee for those record requests, and sometimes it's frustrating, but it is part of the process. Open records laws specifically require we make them available, which would mean that we would bring out the code book or bring out the minutes or whatever and put them in front of a person. Obviously, with COVID or with today's times, it's much easier for a person to either get that record and get it via email or have it printed and sent to them. And so because delivery of the record is happening, we are under some other obligations. For one, under the law, we have to make sure that we're not releasing plans, drawings, or specifications prepared for a person other than the city or the employee of the city, that we're not releasing those to a private person. So though an engineer's drawings or plans might show up in a packet, that may not be released under certain cases unless we've gotten permission, or under certain contracts we have with vendors, we can't release their information unless we're using it for a specific business purpose. So that requires research and redaction, and that's where we get those fees. Another reason why we might have fees is we're required to protect private information that if released might create an invasion of personal privacy. So a person doing business with the city over their water bill might be subject to a request by a business on maybe the amount of people we've had late on their water bills. We'd have to go through all that information and redact that personal information. Or someone who applied for a business license or entered into a farm lease, they still get to enjoy the privacy aspect, so we have to review the records for that, and that sometimes incurs time and fees. Another reason might be an engineer's estimates or an engineering... I'm sorry, engineering or architectural estimates made by and for a public agency relevant to public improvements. You might see that in a packet and think, you know, that should be ready to be released, but engineering firms sometimes are strict about what we can release based on their estimates because they have a business interest in regulating how much of that gets out. So what might seem like a simple request to the city sometimes requires more digging and clerk's time and staff time, and that requires fees. Those are just some areas that we've seen lately, and we try to explain all the reasons why we might assess fees, but if you have other questions, a person can always talk to the city clerk or myself about records requests, and that's all.
Thank you. And I do think it's important that we do charge a fee for a record request. I remember in my days working medicine, when we charged fees, it was amazing how many frivolous requests went away because they said, oh, I got to pay for that? Yes, it does cost time and staff and money. So yeah, thank you for the review. City manager.
I just wanted to remind our citizens that city office will be closed next Thursday and Friday for Christmas, and then the December 31st and January 1st for New Year's holiday. And I just wanted to wish all of our citizens a happy holidays. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. So item A is Development Central Park Third is ready to move forward with Phase Two and Three to finish out development. Petitions are being submitted to install the public infrastructure and what council is considering accepting tonight. I think we have... Do we need Mr. Gallon? He's here. But I don't know if this is an issue we need to have him discuss or not, but...
Good evening.
Evening.
We've entered this routine a number of times this year, but it's, again, time to accept petitions for public improvements in a phase development, and then along with acceptance of petitions. You'll have authorizing resolutions, and those authorizing resolutions will establish the benefit districts and estimated costs and methods of assessment so that you can then go out for bid and make commitments and enter into construction contracts and get the projects moving forward. I did want to point out one thing that in one of the resolutions, and it's the resolution when you get there, related to the berm and landscaping improvements, there's a reference to the method of assessment, and it's a fractional basis where certain lots benefit a little more and some benefit a little less based on the engineer's calculations. And I got the denominator wrong, and so in Section D of that resolution, it showed 1/58ths and 2/58ths, and it should be 68ths. And that matches the petition, by the way, so...
I believe that's item F.
Yes, so when you get there, I want you to consider that resolution with that change. 1/58ths and 2/58ths should be 1/68ths and 2/68ths. The only other thing of note on these various improvements is that they replace, and you'll notice, they amend, restate, and repeal resolutions from 2009. So there were petitions submitted in 2009, which is a long time ago, and these improvements just weren't proceeding and didn't move forward, and city manager and I discussed it a little bit, and I thought it was best, and he agreed that this governing body should just consider it like it's brand new today, get new petitions, new resolutions, will amend, restate, repeal those prior resolutions. So that's the reason for the reference to that. But that's really all I had. This is, again, kind of part of your standard process where it's time to move forward with petitions and authorizing resolutions on these projects.
So I might have got a little bit ahead of myself because the note here actually has you on item B, but it's all...
That's okay.
They're all related, A through F, are all related to the same project.
Right.
So I think we're fine. If you have questions, Mr. Gallon, I think this would be a good time. We can actually just walk through each of these resolutions, one right after the other. But we have to read, if I remember right, we have to read each one of them. Is that correct, city attorney? Ms. Kelly?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you could combine them, but then it becomes an issue if later on you have an issue with one resolution or one part, now the whole thing is muddled together, so it's much better to read them.
So we have to read each one of them separately, vote on separately, and just move forward. I think just the consideration, just to make it most efficient, let's ask any questions now and then walk through the resolutions if we can, if you want. Unless somebody objects to that, and it's fine if you do. We've discussed each one of them individually. Okay? So any other questions or discussion, Mr. Gallon, before we proceed?
If you change your mind, I'll be sent right over here.
Certainly have that option.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroeder.
All motion to accept petitions for Prestwick Berm and Landscaping, Phase Two of Storm Water Drain Improvement, and Phase Three of Paving, Sanitary Sewer and Water Distribution in Central Park Third Edition. Second.
Second. Discussion. Right now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item B.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I move to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the City of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, pavement improvements, Central Park Third Edition, Phase Three, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution Number R-09-16, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Right now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. On item C.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Elsop.
I motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the City of Bel Air, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sanitary sewer improvements, Central Park Third Edition, Phase Three, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution Number R-09-17, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
First and second. Any discussion? Right now, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. On item D.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the City of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, storm water drain improvements, Central Park Third Edition, Phase Two, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution Number R-09-18, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Right now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. On item E.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll move to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the City of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, water distribution system improvements, Central Park Third Edition, Phase Three, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution Number R-09-15, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Right now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. On to item F.
And this is the one where Section 1D should have a corrected reference to the fractions as 1/68ths and 2/68ths.
Mr. Mayor. Do we need to amend this motion at all based upon Mr. Gallon's input?
Sure, where you're...
So, yeah, Section 2D, it has fractional basis or shares for assessment, and I had 1/58ths and 2/58ths, and it should be 1/68ths. So the five in each of those should be six.
So that is section one of the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, then as amended?
An as amended. Thank you.
The clerk asked for the clerk to understand.
Okay, very good. Those council members understand it.
People are still looking for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm missing that resolution in my packet.
I'm not finding mine either. You said it's Section Two?
Section 1D as in dog, so in my printed copy, it's, probably most of these resolutions, that section's gonna be early on.
Yeah, I don't think that's...
That's the, yeah, it is the last.
Yeah, I think I'm missing that one from my packet.
And if you look at, and this may or may not help, the caption of the resolution, this is the one that refers to Prestwick berm and landscaping improvements. Otherwise, they all look alike and can identify the different improvements. Oh, I'm confused because there's this, it was kind of covered everything. I thought this was the, this is not the actual resolution.
I didn't change the order of the resolutions and stuff there. But I want to make sure council members understand it, know what they're voting on. They're the ones voting it.
We need to just table this in front of copies for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, so I, I mean, I saw the copy that, and, you know, we have that same exact format in all the, in all the other ones, so I understand, you know, what's going on and what they did, and was able to see a copy of it anyway. So I'm comfortable with moving forward, if other people are.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I as well. I'm pretty kind of moving forward on this.
Okay, is that what the council wants to move to do? I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that you're well informed on what you're voting on. That's my only concern.
For me, Mr. Mayor, for me, since it's the same format, and I was able to see the copy and understand, I, I mean, it's just like all the other ones. It's just a different fraction on this one than it is on, on the different ones. So...
Yeah, I'm looking at it, though, and I'm, I want to double check and make sure that the lot numbers are right.
Okay.
In this, because it looks like there are additional lots in this one. I'm seeing on the copy that was handed to me, lots 15, lot 15 is included, lots four through eight are included, and in the other petitions we're talking about, I don't see those lots included. And so this is a copy paste thing that got us off. I want to make sure it's not also an issue with the lot numbers.
This Stephen is getting us copies of this. Can we bypass this and come back? Do we need to table this and then come back to it later after we get the copies of the correct resolution?
I believe you can set it aside. I haven't had an experience of bypassing. You don't have a motion for it right now.
No, there's no motion on the table.
There's no motion. So it's a matter of reorganizing the agenda. I think that would be fine. I don't think that that's...
Do we need to vote on reorganizing the agenda?
I think if you were to vote on it, it would be even better. I, I haven't experienced this.
Mr. Smith?
My, my only question is if we can just confirm the lot numbers for me. I just want to understand that it is, it seems like we're, we're all, we're talking about Central Park Third Edition through all of this, but the lot numbers on this petition in front of me are different.
Yeah, those come from the petition, and, which I didn't print and bring with me, but I think if you have the petition that corresponds, it does match it. And my mistake, when I was working through it, and I always double check the math, is, I think I was reading 30 through 58 is 40 through 58, so he's coming up 10 lots off on the fraction, and just, because I'll double check the fraction and make sure it ends up being a full 100% of, and, and so again, as I was looking at it again today, that's, that is the, the petition is correct at 1/68ths, and I thought maybe there was something wrong with the petition. And that's good. We don't have to do anything else with the petition. This just corrects what I had drafted to correspond to that.
I'm completely good with the fraction change, and it's just super important to get the lot numbers correct on these, and so I just want to make sure you're 100% confident in that, and if you are, then I'm fine with moving forward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may just add to what Congressman Smith was saying. So he's addressing under the Central Park Third Edition heading, for the berm and landscaping, it's a different set of lot numbers than the other petitions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's, that's the answer.
Yeah. So I guess I was making a mordive for what that was, but it is supposed to be different, and, and that leads to the fractions being a little more complex.
Okay. I think I understand.
Okay, so we all have an understanding what that is, and Miss Stephanie gave each other, each council member a copy of the, of the actual, what we're petitioning for, or signed petition, but, motion, what we're, the resolution that we're making. Okay.
Okay. Back to item D, it's gonna be 1/68th instead of 1/58th. Have we amended that?
Correct.
Okay.
And you're talking the resolution, item D, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
1D.
Right. Great. Okay.
So we're gonna hopefully pass this as amended rather than...
Yeah, this is an as amended motion. When somebody wants to make that motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welch.
All make a motion to approve the amended resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, Prestwick berm and landscaping improvements, Central Park Third Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. On to item G. Council accepted petitions and approved the funding resolution previously. City engineers solicited bids for installation of water and sewer mains, and four companies responded to this bid. Our city engineer, Anne Stevens, is here to discuss the project and answer questions, and this is sanitary sewer and water improvements for Phase Three of Central Park Third.
As the mayor said, the bids were accepted in mid-November. We had the four bidders responding. Mies was the low bidder on the aggregate project. This is the, the project is shown up here. Basically, where Mount Bel Air is, the big old dirt pile just north of City Hall, that's where this project is gonna be located. So Mount Bel Air is gonna be no more. I'm sorry, children, your ski hill is gonna be gone. It's going to be developed into houses, but i- in some ways, we're gonna be glad to see that, that get gone and more rooftops coming to Bel Air. Mies, we've had very good luck with Mies. They've been a great contractor, really haven't, have not had any problems with them, and I would highly recommend that you accept their bid for the project.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I move to accept the bid from Mies in the amount of $186,660 for sanitary sewer and water improvements in the Phase Three of Central Park Third Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Second.
Sorry?
Okay.
Great, very well.
Well, I heard Diane, this went in second, so I'll take her second. Go on to any discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. On to item H. Same project as the stormwater drain improvement for Phase Three. City engineer also solicited bids with the installation of stormwater for the Phase Three of Central Park Third. Five companies responded with bids. The city engineer, Anne Stevens, is here to discuss the project and answer any questions.
Okay, this is for the same location. I've been going back and forth with the city clerk and Mies as to whether this is Phase Two of the project or Phase Three, so I do want to put that out there upfront. Regardless, it is for this area highlighted in yellow. We will clarify Phase Two, Phase Three tomorrow, and just kind of make sure that we get everything correct in the notes, but it is for this yellow highlighted project. We did have five bidders responding. Mies, again, came in low, which is actually really good because we need to get the stormwater drain done, which is the overall grading for the project, done prior to the water and sewer. So with Mies having both contracts on the project, it will flow very nicely. They can have their sewer and water crews work, start to work on the one part where they're, while they're working dirt on the other. So it'll actually work out very nicely. As I said, we've worked with Mies, many different projects. They do a very good job. They have been expanding recently into grading operations, have been doing a very good job last several years, so I wouldn't hesitate to ask you to, or to approve the contract for Mies tonight.
So this is the contract to remove the mountain?
Yes. Yes. Goodbye, Mount Bel Air.
Where are they gonna put the mountain?
The mountain is gonna get spread out over through the entire site. Some of it will be on the landscaping and berms in front of the Central Park, kind of screening that development.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I motion to accept the bid from Mies in the amount of $138,931.50 from Stormwater Drain Improvements in Phase Three of the Central Park Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
First and second. And Mr. Smith?
Did you say 138,000?
Who knows what I said? I meant 193,931.50. That's not what I said.
We agree to 158,000.
So you're amending your motion to...
Yeah, I guess if I did say it wrong.
Okay. Are you accepting the amendment as a second? Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item I, Contract Amendment Number, Amendment Number One to Agreement with Garver for Ditch Drainage Evaluation. So the council discussed the need for improvements in Eagle Lake Dam as identified in the Call Valley Engineering Study. I believe that was done in 2017, is that the correct year?
I think it was 18. It was, it's been a few years.
Been a few years. Anne asked Garver to amend their initial agreement to include identifying needs, the needed improvements. No, she's, Anne is here to discuss and answer any questions.
So as we had discussed at the last council meeting, Garver did submit an amendment for their agreement to study the areas of the Eagle Lake Dam that were identified in the Call Valley Report that the mayor mentioned. Because there's also some pervasive flooding that has been identified in that area as well, we, we expanded the scope of the study to look at the overflow and expand Garver's survey to make sure that we're doing what we can and being fair to that neighbor, not putting the majority of the water down there. I'm not saying we are, but we're gonna take a look at it. So the area in red on the slide is the area that Garver is going to be taking a look at. It does not include an overall study of Eagle Lake. It does not include study of Fawn Lake or anything downstream, but it's primarily just this area to make sure. We know what's going on. We fix any deficiencies, and we're being good stewards and good neighbors.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
And so I guess I just want to make sure that I understand. So the outputs from this study will likely be some information like where we should add some dirt, or if we could build things up, or if things are functioning as designed. Just can you, can you help us understand what, what we might do with the results from the study?
Sure. So Ken Lee is also here with Garver to help answer questions, but the results of this study will, it will be, the results of this study will tell us what needs to happen, and then they will also put together design plans that we can go and use for bidding purposes. Primarily, we anticipate it's gonna be some grading, put some dirt here, put some dirt there, take away a little bit of dirt here. That, that's, that's the kind of improvements that we're gonna be expecting. I do not anticipate any large-scale issues. Mr. Lee has already talked with, so preliminary discussions with the Corps of Engineers on this project, and while the Corps does need additional information, they suspect that we can just get by with a nationwide permit, which would not, would be much cheaper than having alternatives, any significant changes to the dam. So these are minor modifications.
Excellent. Well, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if we're gonna spend some money on a study here, that the types of changes that we might be potentially making are things that we can afford to do, and, because I would hate to go do a study and then say, hey, we have some great information, but we actually can't afford to do anything about it because there, there are likely to be huge changes that are, you know, not things that we've budgeted for, but it sounds like we expect that they might be smaller.
Really briefly towards that, I did talk to Lucius Dirksen with the Corps of Engineers about the project, and the kind of work we need to be looking at doing here mostly is just, like, if we've got flooding in the yards, look at regrading to probably take out dirt into lower areas to encourage the water to go away from the property. They don't really like us bringing in dirt, so it will be mostly just, I'm expecting small grading operations, looking at maybe modifying the overflow so it's more user-friendly if it's been raining, that we don't have to worry about standing water, those kind of issues. We're not looking at any kind of major structural changes to the dam itself. It's gonna be minor grading is what I'm anticipating, and as she mentioned in our discussions with him, a nationwide three permit is what they're expecting based on my initial discussion with him, which is just maintenance of a dam permit, and pretty simple, so.
Very good. Any other questions? Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question just specific to the motion itself. So we have the staff report that has the amount of $9,710, and I was just curious, is it not on the item because it's less than $10,000, but close? I just didn't know if when we make the motion, if we have to identify the cost unless I'm misunderstanding.
I don't, and correct me if I misunderstand this, Ms. Kelly, but I do not believe we need to identify the cost in this particular motion. We're modifying a contract that's already been approved.
Oh.
They were increasing it, so the total cost is going up. Do we need to mention the total cost?
No, you do not. Just your added costs, the complete amount that you're adding.
And the funds for this were coming from stormwater fund, I believe?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I'll make a motion to approve Contract Amendment Number One to the agreement with Garver for ditch drainage evaluation Aurora Park, Hillcrest, and Cozy Drive, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any other discussion? First and second, any other discussion? During now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item J, um, this is supplemental agreement number one with the Secretary of Transportation, the Kansas Department of Transportation. Uh, so Ann and Jackie are working on acquiring the needed temporary and permanent easements for the expansion of Woodlock. KDOT requires all easements to be required before bidding can take place. The supplemental agreement extends the bidding to February of twenty twenty-one. And Jackie can explain their progress and answer any questions. So this, this had already been moved out. It was off October of twenty twenty when they were going to do this and but the right-of-way hadn't been secured, so we couldn't move forward with it.
Right, right. This is the first, um, expansion of this timeframe. And we are working on finalizing, uh, right-of-ways and anticipate doing our very best to meet this deadline. Uh, we don't anticipate having to move it again at this time.
I hope we don't.
And I have been in contact with our representative of KDOT and been keeping him informed. He's been very pleased with the progress and has made no mention of moving the date again.
Good, good. Yeah. Just go keep the pressure on and get those, those right-of-ways cleared. So I know you're working it, so I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
One of the, the interesting items here, uh, that we've got listed out in our staff report is item ten on uh, how our new agreement with KDOT says that we are prohibited from using certain technologies or technologies from certain technology vendors, but we made our IT provider aware that uh, as, as part of this agreement, any future IT purchases, we'll have to make sure none of the chips or any of the components are manufactured by any of these, uh, these providers, if I'm understanding this correctly.
I do not believe that the IT provider has been, it has been told specifically about this amendment yet since it has not been passed, but as soon as it's passed tonight, they will be informed.
Yeah. There's some big names in there that make a lot of technology stuff, so that
Right.
uh, could be impactful.
I think this is a result of an executive order. Is that true?
I believe so.
These technologies?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I'll take entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroeder.
I move to approve this supplemental agreement number one by, by in between the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation, the City of Bel Air for roadway reconstruction, Woodlock, Woodlock reconstruction project, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? During now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Item K, considering ordinance authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property, uh, the Public Building Commission owns all the land located in some part of Commerce Park and leases those parcels to the city. The PBC recently sold one hundred and eighty acres that closes Friday. As a result, as a result, the city needs to approve the disposition of properties stated under the lease. And Kevin Cowan, the gentleman of Bell, is here to answer any questions.
So that was a really good summary. I'll add a little bit to it. There are outstanding public building commission revenue bonds on the Commerce Park property. And built into those bond documents is an ability for the city to sell land and take the proceeds from the sale of that land and redeem bonds with it. Uh, and, and so that was a negotiated thing with the bond underwriter, and there's just a level of formality that it requires, and, and this is that, that you the city approves it by ordinance, the PBC approves it by resolution, you, you acknowledge who the purchaser is. Um, it, what the specific property is and includes some of those details. So that's, that's what this is. It's just the PBC lease with the city allows you to sell the property or allows PBC to sell the property and the city to approve it by ordinance, and that starts in motion. What you'll want to do is just to take those sale proceeds and be able to redeem bonds.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property under a lease agreement between the City of Bel Air, Kansas and the City of Bel Air, Kansas Public Building Commission and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? During now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. So I would like to ask for a twenty-minute executive session. Need a motion for that. I believe the wording of this motion is correct. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroeder.
I move to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of consultation with attorney to discuss valuation of certain negotiations of a public politic within purview of the governing body pursuant to the KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine exception for attorney-client privilege cons- and consultation and to provide this, to invite the city manager and city attorney. The meeting will be for a period of twenty minutes, and the opening will resume in the chambers at eight eleven P M.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? During now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We're in executive session for twenty minutes. Okay. Rock and Way up, all right? Very good. Thank you. Anything else you need to throw out there?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll move to adjourn.
Mr. Schroder, I'm sorry.
That's the second time Mr. Smith did that at all, and I'll take it.
I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Very good. First and second for adjournment. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. And then we have a landback meeting.